Good morning guys, welcome back to our SIT classes. So in the last lesson, we were discussing about the different concepts of development and along with that, planning. So we discussed that what do we mean by planning and along with that, we also discussed about the different factors of planning. Now here we are going to discuss about economic planning means how economic planning is useful for different kind of economies and how it is useful for Indian economy and how we are using the process of planning. So the point is planning in India. So first of all, before starting the discussion, I would like to tell you about economic planning. So guys, as in the last mission, we discussed that planning means a method, a technique in which available resources are fabricated distributed among the various target decided on priority basis and efforts are made to achieve these targets. In the same manner, economic planning means the science and technique under which all the available economic resources are fabricated distributed among the various targets and efforts are made to achieve these targets means to achieve the target of economic development. And this kind of science and technique is called as plan. Is that clear guys? So here we are going to discuss about planning in India. The concept of planning, first of all in the world was adopted by Soviet Union. Means we can say that it was first of all adopted by Soviet Russia. The first country who adopted the process of planning in the world and Russia adopted this concept in 1928. Means in the year of 1928, the concept of planning was adopted by Soviet Russia. And in this way, under this process of planning, five-year plans were formed. Five-year plan for home and the first, the first five-year plan presented a revolutionary result. So in this way, the process of learning came into being. Means first of all, on national level, it was started by Russia in 1928 and in this way, five-year plans were formed. And the first five-year plan, the result of the first five-year plan was really very surprising or we can say that revolutionary results were presented by the first five-year plan and this with the concept of learning came into being. And after that, different country followed the concept of Russia and adopted the process of planning. This successful effort of Russia means the first successful effort in the matter of planning was made by Russia and the first five-year plan of Russia was very successful. So this successful effort of Russia attracted the scholars of the different countries of world. Indian scholars were also affected by this concept of planning and in India from 1932, 1940, many economists or Indian scholars presented their views about planning. In this way, the most important theory was presented in 1934 by M. Vishweshwaraya. M. Vishweshwaraya was a medical scholar related to present the concept of planning in India and he presented this concept of planning in his book named as Plan Economy of India. In this way, we can say that the first scholar who presented a view or we can say that a suitable or balanced view on the concept of planning was M. Vishweshwaraya and he presented in 1934 in his famous book named as Plan Economy of India. Is that clear guys? After that, the concept of planning was adopted by the Indian government just after independence. When it got finished on 15th August 1947, after that, the first Indian government means the government which was formed by Indian leaders, that government adopted the concept of planning and for adoption of planning means for making five-year plans, Indian government formed So the concept of planning was first of all presented together by M. Vishweshwaraya in 1934 in his book Plan Economy of India. And after that, Indian government adopted the process of planning just after independence. And for the planning or we can say that under the process of planning for the formation of five-year plans, Indian government formed Planning Commission in March 1950. Is that clear guys? The next concept is why didn't the Indian government think about formation of Planning Commission? And which kind of works were decided for Planning Commission? Means which were the major objective behind the formation of Planning Commission and which were the major works allotted to the Planning Commission? So first of all, the objective behind the formation of Planning Commission was to form, to form five-year plans, five-year plans for the country. So in this way, the objective behind the formation of Planning Commission was related with the formation of five-year plans for the country. Means the Planning Commission was formed to form five-year plans for the country. Is that clear guys? Now after that, which were the major works related with Planning Commission? So which kind of work were allotted to the Planning Commission? The first work allotted to the Planning Commission was related with evaluation of Means the first work of Planning Commission was related with evaluation of available resources of the country and to make plan to increase and balance use of these resources. Is that clear guys? The first work of Planning Commission is evaluation of available resources and form plans to increase and balance use of these resources. Along with that, the next objective, sorry, the next work is fixing targets on, fixing targets on priority basis. The next work allotted to the Planning Commission was related with fixing targets on priority basis. Means which kind of targets should be adopted on the priority basis, which which kind of targets and goals should be achieved first and how they should be achieved. Now the next point is suggest roadmap among the targets decided on priority basis. So in this way, the last work related with Planning Commission is suggest a roadmap for fabricated allocation of resources among the various target decided on priority basis. So the Planning Commission was formed with an objective to form five-year plans for the country and the major works allotted to the Planning Commission are evaluation of available resources of the country and to make plans to increase and balance use of these resources, fixing targets on priority basis. And along with that, the last point is to suggest a roadmap to allocate resources among the various targets decided on priority basis. If, if you will closely have a look on all the factors we discussed in the planning, then you will find that the works of Planning Commission are just the same as we discussed under the factors of planning. So evaluation of available resources, fixing targets on priority basis and suggest roadmap to allocate resources among the various target decided on priority basis. Is that clear guys? The next point which we are going to discuss here is National Development Council. Means after the formation of Planning Commission, National Development Council was formed in August 1952. Now the question is why was National Development Council formed? What was the major reason behind that or we can say that with which objective National Development Council was formed? So the major objective behind the formation of National Development Council was to include, implementation of, implementation of planning. And in this way, to decentralize the process of planning. Means the National Development Council was formed with an objective to include the states and union territories in the process of planning. In the process of formation and implementation of planning, means how the plan should be formed and how should be the plans implemented. To decide that, along with the central government, the state and union territories were also included in according to the formation of National Development Council. Means it was formed to include the states and union territories in the process of planning and in this way to decentralize the process of planning. Now after that, the next concept which are the major works related with National Development Council. So there are two major works related with National Development Council. At first, National Development Council approve all the plans formed by Planning Commission. Means all the plans formed by Planning Commission are approved by National Development Council. And along with that, as the other work, National Development Council evaluate the progress of the plans implemented by Planning Commission, time to time in this way checking progress and prepare report on the progress of plans implemented by Planning Commission. So in this way, the major work of the National Development Council are to accept or to accept or to approve, to approve the plans of Planning Commission. This means Planning Commission. And along with that, to check the, to check the progress of plans, progress of plans implemented by Planning Commission. So in this way, along with Planning Commission, National Development Council was also formed in India and this National Development Council was formed with an objective to include the states and union territories in the process of formation and implementation of planning along with that, its major work was to accept or approve the plans from the Planning Commission and finally to check the progress of plans implemented by Planning Commission. So National Development Council was also a constitutionally advised commission formed by Indian government with a resolution in August 1952. Is that clear guys? Now the next point which we are going to discuss here is related with the major objectives of planning in India. So as we discussed that, the Indian government adopted the process of planning just after independence. So which were the major objectives decided by the Indian government behind the adoption of this planning process? So the major objectives of the Indian government are elimination, elimination of poverty. Means Indian government decided to eliminate poverty with the help of different kind of five-year plans formed in India. So that that was the first objective decided by Indian government behind the adoption of the process of planning, elimination of poverty in India. After that, the next point is to increase employment opportunities. Means under the process of planning, Indian government formed different kind of plans to increase employment opportunities. The next objective is to increase healthcare facilities, to increase healthcare facilities. The next objective is to achieve, to achieve the target of, target of high economic, to achieve the target of high economic. Now the next objective is to achieve the target of self-dependency in various sectors of production, especially in the sector of food grain production and industrial raw material production. To achieve self-dependency, self-dependency in different sectors of production, especially in the sector of food grain production and industrial raw material production. The next point is release, release development and release development and expansion of release development and expansion of social and communal, social and communal services. Expansion of social and communal services. Now the next objective is to achieve economic stability, to achieve economic stability. As without economic stability, there is no mean of economic development. So the various objectives decided by the Indian government for adoption of the process of planning are elimination of poverty in India, increase employment opportunities, so we can say that elimination of unemployment to achieve the target of self-dependency in different or various sectors of production, especially in the sectors of food grain production and industrial raw material production. Release development, release development and expansion of social and communal services to all the sectors. Along with that, to achieve economic stability. Without economic stability, there is no mean of economic development. And as the last we can say, to eliminate original disabilities. Means some reasons are developed, on the other hand, some reasons are underdeveloped means they are not having a proper development. So in this way, elimination of disabilities present between different reasons by the process of planning was also an objective decided by the Indian government behind the adoption, behind the adoption of the process of planning. So in this way, we discuss about the various objectives of planning in India. Is that clear guys? As the next, we are going to discuss about five-year plans in India. So guys, according to your book, 12 five-year plans have been implemented in India and these five-year plans started from 1st April 1951. What I mean to say that is the first five-year plan in India was from 1st April 1951 to 31st March 1951. Guys, one thing I would like to remind you that in India, the financial year starts from 1st April and end of 31st March. So you have to keep it in your mind that the first five-year plan in India was started from 1951 and completed on 31st March 1956. After that, the second five-year plan was from 1st April 1956 to 31st March 1961. Then third five-year plan from 1st April 1961 to 31st March 1966. 1966, due to the situation of flood, famine and drought, the process of five-year plans was interrupted. It was disturbed and in this way, three one-year plans were implemented in India which from 1st April 1966 to 31st March 1969. Three one-year plans were implemented and the period from 1st April 1966 to 31st March 1969 where one-year plans were implemented in India is known as plan holiday. Guys, you have to keep this term in your mind, what do we mean by plan holiday? So plan holiday means from 1st April 1966 to 31st March 1969, three one-year plans were implemented due to the situation of flood, famine and Indo-Pac War and this period is known as plan holiday. Is that clear? What do we mean by plan holiday? Means the period of 1st April 1966 to 31st March 1969 when three one-year plans were implemented due to the situation of famine, drought and Indo-Pac War is known as plan holiday. After that, the fourth five-year plan was implemented on 1st April 1969 and ended on 31st March 1974. Fifth five-year plan was implemented on 1st April 1974 till 31st March 1979. The term period of this fifth five-year plan was decided in 31st March 1979. But in 1978, the Dean Janta Dawar went to dissolve this fifth five-year plan and implemented a perpetual five-year plan from 1978 to 1983. But in 1980, the Congress government dissolved the perpetual plan and again implemented the same process of five-year plans and according to the orders of the new government, the period of 1978 to means the period of 1st April 1978 to 31st March 1979 was included in the fifth five-year plan and the period of 1st April 1979 to 31st March 1980 was considered as one-year plan. And after that, the sixth five-year plan was implemented in India. And the period of the sixth five-year plan was from 1st April 1982 to 31st March 1985. And after that, the next five year plan is the seventh five term of seventh five year plan was from first April nineteen eighty five to thirty first March nineteen eighty, sorry, nineteen ninety. Again in nineteen ninety, due to the political situation, the Indian government was not able to implement the five year plans and from first April nineteen ninety two thirty first March nineteen ninety two, again there was a plan holiday. After that, the eighth five year plan was implemented from first April nineteen ninety two to till thirty first March nineteen ninety seven. The ninth five year plan, the term of the ninth five year plan was from first April nineteen ninety seven to thirty first March two thousand two. The term for the tenth five year plan was from first April two thousand two to thirty first March two thousand seven. In this way, the term for the eleventh five year plan was from first April two thousand seven to thirty first March two thousand twelve. Now after that, the term for the eleventh five year plan is first April two thousand seven to thirty first March two thousand twelve. And then for the term for the twelfth five year plan is, is from first April two thousand twelve to thirty first March two thousand seven. And after that, the plan which is under process now is the thirty five year plan and then time needed for this five year plan is from first April two thousand seventeen to thirty first March two thousand twenty two. Is that clear guys? So in this way, in this video, we discuss about the process of planning in India, Planning Commission, National Development Council, objectives of planning in India and along with that, various five year plans implemented in India till now. So guys, I wish you all got my point, I hope so. And if there will be any doubt, then you can while watching this video, you can write me in the comment box, I will definitely help you to resolve all your, all of your doubts. Till then, stay home and be safe. Thank you very much. Have a nice day. Chai.